Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 26, 2019 New Bern Board of Alderman meeting. I'd like to turn the meeting over to Alderman Bingle, who will be giving us the prayer.
It's too short right now. Mr. Public Works, I need my booster seat, please. Jesus. Sorry. Thank you. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the rain early this morning, and we thank you for the sunshine this afternoon. And, Lord, we thank you for all of the officials present here today. We ask that you give them good conscience and good mind as we do the work of our citizens. We thank you for all the citizens that are attending tonight, and we ask that you bless each and every one that is here tonight. We ask you that you bless our city, and that you continue to keep your hand on all we do and all we say, for it's in your most precious name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
If you would join me for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, draw the roll, please.
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris, present. Alderman Astor, here. Mayor Outlaw. Alderman Kinsey, here. Alderman Bess, present. Mayor Protim Odom, here.
Does everyone have a chance to look at the agenda? Any changes? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
(Inaudible).
Second.
A motion by Alderman Astor, and a second by Alderman Bingle, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, number six, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Odom and members of the board. Item number six is a presentation by Disaster Recovery Services. This was requested from the Board of Alderman, and they wanted to hear from our consultant that we hired to help us through the FEMA claims and activities associated with Hurricane Florence. So, at this time, I'm going to ask Corey to come up from Disaster Recovery Services, and he's going to kind of give us an update as to where we are and things left to be done with regards to our FEMA submittals and reimbursements for claims of damage incurred during the storm.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name, I'm Corey Spalding with Disaster Recovery Services. Wanted to start off by saying what a pleasure it has been to be in this city here, and I have a couple items before we get into our presentation. The first one being is that I want to tell you how hard your city departments have worked in trying to recover from this disaster and gather up the paperwork and documentation needed to turn into FEMA. It is a gauntlet process, and they have all been troopers at it, and great progress is moving forward. The second thing I want to introduce, Sam Teeman, he's your onsite representative from DRS. He's here every day, and doing a very good job. And, the third item that I wanted to mention to you was, is that your former FEMA onsite person here in the last disaster, Mr. Bob Bass, I spoke to him this afternoon. He told me that this was the best city that he had ever worked in in his career with FEMA, and how much he enjoyed it, and he asked me to express his, I'm trying to think of the exact words that he used, but he said, "Tell them I said hello." To give you a little bit of an update on the insurance end of it, you have an NFIP policy, and that, to date, has paid out to you about $347,000. There is more money to go on that, and that is presently being worked on, and also that is in part, part of the reason that we asked for the engineering firm to be retained, which is item nine, I believe, on your consent agenda here. So, as soon as they're in place, we expect the full $500,000 payment. There's some documentation that needs to be put together, and coming from an engineering firm, that's the, we've decided that's the best and easiest and simplest way to get to that point there. You have a wind insurance policy, and you have significant wind damages to the community over here. They have given you a $200,000, I believe it's a $250,000 advance, at least that's what my notes say here. They are due to come back here in about 10 days for their second and final inspection of all of the rest of the buildings. We're working up the list of additional wind damaged buildings for them to come up here, and that will be, the wind claim is going to be an ongoing claim with them. It's going to take quite a while to do this, due to the number of facilities that are involved that have wind damages, your fencing and stuff like that. So, that is a work in progress item. Your flood insurance policy, your excess flood insurance policy, has a million dollar limit, and they have issued you an advance as well. My notes say 300, but someone said that it may be 350. So, whatever the advance was, they have given you an advance. We have submitted documentation to them of damages from flooding that are insured that far exceed the million dollar limit that you have. They have accepted that. They have submitted it to the insurance company, and there were a couple questions that came back, but the damages were in, well in excess of the limits that you have, and you can anticipate that the full policy limit should be paid, I believe shortly, as soon as the paperwork can be done. You have insurance on your fire department vehicles and some of the fire buildings. Those claims have been paid pretty much in full, and with the exception of, there are two, the fire training building is still open, okay, because of issues with the fact that that is a substantially damaged structure, and the cost of putting that back in compliance is, again, part of why the engineering firm is being retained, to capture those costs, so that they can be submitted to VFIS. Your debris removal, we are, we're like 99% complete with getting those packages put together. We always seem to have one invoice that's holding things up. I had suggested that, you know, because of the dollar values involved, let's, you know, submit this, and then we can do a follow-up to it, and FEMA kind of threw us a curveball lately, and just said, "Well, we're not going to allow versions on worksheets for category A and category B work." And, I today made four phone calls and said, "I've never heard of anything like this," which is actually the reason I called Mr. Bass, asked if he had ever heard of it, and no one has, so the rules are just constantly changing. I guess that's enough said on that. So, on your debris removal, we are very close, whether it goes in in part or in total. It is there that, there's a tremendous amount of money that's involved in that. We have multiple category B worksheets, the ones for the fire department and police department overtime, I understand totaled around $990,000. That is, that is in the system. It's been in the system since March 11th, and FEMA hasn't done anything to process that yet, although that is going to be on an items list for the next FEMA meeting, to try to move that forward and get funding into your, into your community. The category D work, which is your ditches and your waterways and your drainage canals that you have here, that have obviously a lot of sediment and trees that have fallen into them, FEMA did come out and do a sampling inspection of those. They turned those site inspection sheets over to the city. Between the city and myself, we've reviewed them. We've signed them and sent them back to them, as they were, they were pretty accurate, with a couple of corrections, and those will be processed through the system. And, we are presently now working on taking those site inspection sheets up. I have them almost converted over to Excel to do a totaling of the quantities, so that we can kind of get an idea of where the dollar values are on the sampling. And, again, that's a work in progress, and that will continue to work its way forward through the FEMA system. Your buildings, you have, many of the buildings are covered under the million dollars worth of insurance that you have, and we have tentatively allocated a lot of monies to those buildings as the easiest way. Obviously, the damages that you had are going to be excess of the million dollars, and we've tried to appropriate that million dollars to the best advantage of the city in terms of the easiest way to get it through the system. Some of those buildings have actually been withdrawn from the FEMA system and are not going to be pursued through them, because they are going to be 100% insured. We worked through this process for about 10 days to confirm with the city, and Mark and I worked on it. And, so, those are another 20 things that are off of the FEMA list, which hopefully should make things flow smoother, since you don't have such a larger volume. There are going to be some more worksheets that will continue to be pulled as we do more assessments to that. We are still working on the utilities end of it. That's, that is a huge project, and to try to pull all of that paperwork together with all of the work being done in such an accelerated fashion. Your utility work is always the work that is done the fastest. The paperwork slides to the side, and the utilities department is working on putting it together. It's just a slow process. And, we submitted to FEMA a request for a time extension on your emergency work, which has to be done at the six-month period. We felt that most of the work, or all of the work, may be completed. We recommended that it be submitted, just in case there's something that comes up afterwards that somebody forgot about, and so that it can be covered. I haven't heard back from the state, but that's not necessarily uncommon. It's usually something that gets accepted on an acknowledgement basis when it's been sent in. Last week, myself and many of the community here attended a meeting at a local church to express, or to answer questions regarding the Stanley White Center, and to give a status update. That meeting went well, considering the issues and circumstances that are involved, and I'm sure that that will be a continuing, ongoing issue for the city. You have four substantially damaged buildings that we have identified at this point in time, of which Stanley White is one of them. We have another that we are working on the numbers to see how it, we don't have, we don't have the damage numbers, and we actually don't have the market value numbers, but that is something that we are working on. That's a smaller building, that's not, that's not a huge issue, it's a storage building. I think that's the end of my update at this point in time. I'm sure that the first question is, is when's money going to start rolling in?
So, when's money going to start rolling in?
Question four.
As soon as we possibly can make it roll in.
Arnold McKinnon.
Early on, you mentioned that engineer would come in to assess, along with some of the paperwork. Is the engineer that, are we the ones that has to, obtain the engineer to come in? I think you mentioned that early on in the conversation.
I'll elaborate on that a little bit more. There are many different ways that you can turn around and assess the values to the damaged buildings here. One of them is to submit them through an estimating professional to FEMA. The second way is, is that you can submit them through an architect and an engineering firm, and the third way is, is that you can let FEMA come up with the prices after they come out to take a look at it. I can assure you, you don't want the third. The first one is a good way, and we could do it that way. However, many of the rules and regulations give a little bit of a greater weight to an estimate done by a licensed architect or engineer, and especially a local one here. So, that is why we recommended that it be put out for an RFQ, and my understanding was, is that the awardeur of the RFQ was a local person that is on your agenda. So, in answer to your question, there are many ways that it can be done. We felt that this would be to the best advantage of the city, and also under the 428 grant program, which is the alternate procedures program, which many of these substantially damaged buildings will most likely fall under. There is a provision in there for recovering the cost to an estimate, and it specifically talks about an estimate done by a licensed professional or an architect or an engineer. So, we are anticipating that the costs for that will be able to be recovered from FEMA as part of the grant program.
Out of your experience of doing this type of work, has it ever been challenged to say, "Well, we don't think that this building needs to be towed down, or this building needs to be towed down"? Have you seen any challenges in your experience?
Yes, I have. I've seen plenty of them, and...
Where were they?
I'm sorry?
What cities, the ones that you've seen? I'm just curious.
No, that's fine. When you have substantially damaged buildings, there are many things as the worksheet goes through the FEMA process. One of them, one of the most important ones is, is that has the community universally enforced its floodplain regulations? In other words, what FEMA looks at is, is that, you know, of the whole flooding event, okay, do you only have one substantially damaged building that you're asking FEMA money for? Or, was the code enforced uniformly across the, across the community? We did investigate this before we even went down this road with the flood program administrator, and he gave us the numbers of substantially damaged buildings that they had, that they had identified from this damage event, and it appeared clear to me that they had uniformly enforced the regulations, and that would not be a particular issue here. In regards to answering your question, our company also reprevents five school districts in the state of Texas, many of which have very similar issues to yourself, substantially damaged buildings, and those, it's been 18 months, one of those has made it through the FEMA system out of about five or six, and the rest of them are there. The problem is that FEMA developed a new delivery model that's supposed to be more efficient and fast. They just forgot to how to integrate substantially damaged buildings into the new delivery model, and so you have oil and water mixing together. They are working on trying to resolve those issues and do that, and they have actually promised to do better in North Carolina, and we're hoping that that does work. We, in Texas, we have worked out a lot of those issues, and they are making their way forward. Did I answer your question, sir?
Pretty much. Out of the four buildings that you were saying that was just damaged, how much water actually went through those four buildings? Do you have any idea on that? I'm just asking questions.
No, I do. On the Stanley White Center, for example, it is a, it's a, the gymnasium, I believe, is a little bit lower than the rest of the building. I'd have to go see it, but I remember walking through there, and my recollection was 14 inches to two feet was the water level that I saw in the building there. You have the BP building. I don't remember what the water level was in there, but my understanding was it was above the two-foot level, or in that area. They had done some cleaning to the building. The fire training building had, I believe, two feet of water in it, or very close to it. And, the Henderson Field restroom, I did not look at, but I know it's at a lower elevation than the Stanley White Center is, so I would say that that had four to five feet in it.
Mr. Stevens, is there some reports that are available to us, if any board member would like to review those?
Reports regarding...
Damage to those buildings, like Arnold McKinnon was just asking for.
Yes, yeah, we have, we have some reports that were performed by, I guess it was, it was the insurance company's adjuster, had an adjustment company come out there, perform some detailed analysis of each of the buildings that were damaged, specifically, a lot of detail in regards to the ones that were substantially damaged, but we're happy to share that if you need it.
That is correct.
Thank you so very much.
And, again, we have the estimates, if you'd like them, that's...
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
That would be fine.
Thank you.
Mr. Corey, I have a quick question. So, based on the 428 mitigation plan, and the reference that you made to the schools in Texas, and the timeframe, and the possibility that it can take a while before we see any results, we're not allowed to do anything to the buildings that have been submitted in the 428 mitigation plan, correct?
There is a...
For example...
I can answer your question, I just had to think about how to phrase it a little bit. It's two parts, okay? The buildings that you are most likely going to elect to take the 428 grant program, it is just a matter of the methodology of how you wish to receive the money, okay? And, we will most likely recommend that you take it under the alternate procedures program, depending on how it gets ultimately processed through FEMA, in other words, agreement on the cost, okay? Under the alternate procedures program, it's a very good program, gives you a lot of flexibility. The one, the one problem with it is, there's a cap to it, and you can't ask for any more, where if you go through the traditional program, you can do it on a, on an as incurred basis, and if you happen to go over the cap, then you can ask FEMA for extra money. So, there is a drawback to it, but the flexibility that that grant program gives you is very important. And, the second part is, under the 428 grant program, it does say in the book that you are not supposed to start work on the buildings, if you wish to elect that until you have an agreed scope of work on the building. We are, we are asking for, to apply them to the buildings that are substantially damaged at this point in time, and not the other buildings. However, those buildings, because they are substantially damaged, they can't be repaired anyway at this point in time without being brought into compliance, so the, so the answer, I believe, is, no, you're not supposed to do anything with them under the 428 grant program or the substantial damage issue.
And, has the 428 mitigation program grant been sent in yet for these buildings?
It has not. We have verbally communicated to FEMA our intentions to participate in that program, and they have acknowledged it, and they have placed it into a different track to process through FEMA, rather than the traditional way that it goes through. And, that track means that, the track that we, the track that you are going to use is, is that the architect and the engineering firm is going to submit the costs for the eligible work for those buildings, which in this particular case is replacement buildings elevated, and then FEMA will review that, and if they agree, then that will be the amount of the grant. And, if you don't agree, then you can, you can withdraw your 428 request and go back to the traditional program. So, you're not locked into it, but it's an option.
So, we're in the process, though? Like, some sort of application or something was sent with this information on there? We're in the process, or...
At this point in time, it was verbally communicated to them. They have acknowledged it, and they have placed those particular projects on the, on the alternate procedures path. FEMA, under their new delivery model, has different lanes, that they call them. They have the completed lane, they have the expedited lane, they have the, you know, a bunch of others, okay? This one has been designated for the alternate procedures lane, I guess you would call it.
Okay, thank you very much.
And, there is, to answer your question about the written paperwork, okay? There is a, there is a form that, after all of this goes through the program and the costs are identified, that the city will be asked to sign if you elect to take the 428 grant, or if you, if you do not want to, then you can turn it down, and it will go the traditional way. Under this particular disaster here, FEMA implemented new rules. Their whole goal ultimately is to have everything go through the, through the alternate procedures 428 grant program, and for this disaster here, for every worksheet that goes into the system and then it comes back out, you're going to, you're going to be asked whether you wish to elect to take the money under the alternate procedures program or the traditional way, and you have 30 days to make up your mind. So, when they come out, we will be asking you at that point in time which road you want to go, and we will have a recommendation on those as well.
Thank you, I appreciate the information.
Corey, a couple of questions, if you don't mind. I just wanted to clarify something first. I want to make sure that I'm saying this correctly, but everyone in this city, whether you're a personal homeowner, or you're a city-owned building, has to apply or has to follow the building codes. And, the problem that we have with the Stanley White Center, as the reason why we cannot get into it now, is because, number one, it is significantly damaged, which means it has to now be brought up to the current code. That four, our elevation, is it somewhere around six feet, which is about three feet or 10 feet below current standards? So, if we wanted to use the building, the building code professionals here in New Bern cannot even by law issue us a building permit, because just like all these homeowners is having the same issues. You know, they have to bring these, this building back to code before we can use it. So, that, you know, I just wanted to, is that, is that correct, Corey?
It is, and as we expressed at the, at the community meeting the other day, I explained to you that in part, we were brought in to ask to double-check your figures on the substantially damaged buildings that you had, so that everybody was assured that this is the way that it was, and that, see, you can manipulate the costs, and the city didn't want to, wanted to make sure that every, they knew that these were going to be issues, and they wanted to make sure that the costs that were being presented were the correct ones, and that there wasn't any way that you could rebuild the Stanley White Center. It wasn't even close in terms of the dollar values. If it was close, I might have offered some suggestions as to how you, you might be able to make it work, but it was so far out of whack that there wasn't any way to make it work. The other thing is, is that you have a, you have an agreement with the National Flood Insurance Program that says they'll sell flood insurance in this community here, and you have to adopt uniform model regulations for enforcement of your floodplain regulations for a building, for new buildings in the community, and for buildings that are substantially damaged. The substantially damaged rule is designed to take non-compliant buildings, if they meet certain, certain criteria, and raise them above the base flood elevation, so that the National Flood Insurance Program doesn't have to keep paying over and over and over again on these buildings. It's a hard rule, it's difficult, and it's, and it's very painful for a community and your residents here. However, if you do not follow those model regulations, you stand in jeopardy of losing your flood insurance certification, and nobody in the community can buy flood insurance.
Corey, I'd like to change gears for a moment.
And, if you'd like to, if you'd like to see what I'm talking about, look up Monroe County, Florida, at one point in time, they were placed on probation with FEMA, and may still be on probation with FEMA, because they did not enforce their floodplain regulations, and it was, it was a nightmare for the community and every resident there.
Corey, if you don't mind, I'm changing mitigation numbers. 406 mitigation, are we, are we looking at doing any 406 mitigation as well? A prime example is the docks and piers that could be built differently than hopefully does.
Exactly. We've reached out to all of the departments that you have and asked, inquired about 406 mitigation, and what you would like to improve. For those in particular, we reached out to Foster, and he said, "Look, we would like to make, if the docks more resilient, so that they hopefully won't get damaged by the next storm." And, you know, sometimes when the next storm comes along, it's of such magnitude, even the mitigation might not work, but it's, it's part of the program, the money is eligible there, and they, and they are working towards that. As a matter of fact, the FEMA site inspectors were out here today, walking through the different parks and inspecting the docks, and actually the other damages to it, and they actually had a 406 mitigation person with them. I spoke to him the first thing in the morning and discussed a couple items with him, one of them being the stage that you had in one of the parks that you would like to build back to be more resilient. We had a discussion about the, certain things fall under the 15% mitigation and the 100% mitigation, depending on what type of building it is, and by that, I mean, some things are automatically declared to be 100%. In other words, if you have $100 worth of damages, you can do another $100 for mitigation. Some are at the 15% level, and this particular one, the stage, it wasn't in the book, but you could allude to it that it was, and that's what we had the discussion about. So, in answer to your question, yes, and we are still continuing to pursue the mitigation, even with the utilities department has expressed some interest. They talked about burying some lines, and we are looking into that. They talked about burying some lines, and we are looking into that. That one's a little bit more difficult, because the mitigation has to be tied to the damaged element, not the entire system, and so we're looking to see if that can be cost-effective.
Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here.
Any other questions or anything? Anything else presentation-wise?
I don't.
I do have one question, and have you ever, in any communities, ever, many would come up with some more expeditious things of resolving the Stanley White? The Stanley White, you might as well, to many in the community, have knocked out City Hall. It's a very important building, and many in the community want to see something back, you know, for recreational purposes and for neighborhood, community activities, et cetera. I know that in the construction industry, you know, you get a letter of credit, you get approval for a certain amount of money, and so propose plans and specs, et cetera, and then you take and do interim financing, and then you get a permanent financing for it. Is there any kind of means, anywhere in the federal government, that we can expedite and process this by means of some more expeditious beings of getting a number of approval from FEMA, and then while all this other bureaucracy paperwork and everything's happening, that we just could get a short-term interim loan, finance it, and build the thing back, and get reimbursed a year or two and eat the interest on it? Because the unknown is really, you know, the mental health of our city is very important, and many in our community are, just feel like, you know, this is why we went to DC, this is why we went to Raleigh three times. If we need to go back to DC, if we need to go to Raleigh, whatever, we want to check and balance this process to make sure as expeditiously as we can resolve this matter we want to do. So, do you have anything else to offer that we can do that we're not doing to ensure the public that we're really serious about coming to closure on this?
Yes, the first comment that I would like to make in regards to that, and after attending the community meeting, it is, it's almost like people think that the Stanley White Center is going to be torn down and nothing's going to be rebuilt back there, and I don't know where that came from.
The fear of the unknown is working for me.
Okay. My goal and my directives have been to try to obtain the maximum amount of funding from the federal government for the full replacement of the Stanley White Center elevated to its current level. That building is eligible for it, it should work its way through the FEMA system over time, and again, the community should end up with a new Stanley White Center that is out of the floodplain, that will not flood again, that it will be better and more resilient than what you had, and also will result in less insurance premiums for the community, because it now is out of the floodplain.
And what's a reasonable expectation of the time element of that? 18 months to three years?
The timeline for it would be that the process that we laid out for it was that the engineering firm that you're going to retain has been, when we did the RFQ for that, I suggested that very short timeframes be put in for the first deliverable, which is the Stanley White Center, and that deliverable timeframe was 30 days from the date that they start, which is a short timeframe, and their deliverable for that is a cost estimate for a new Stanley White Center to current code, so that that can be submitted to FEMA as absolutely soon as possible. That's what that deliverable is, and we expect if this is approved, that in the following week, the kickoff meeting with that engineering firm has, will be scheduled, the 30-day clock will start, and so therefore, the estimate will be done and it can go into FEMA. The other timeframe that we have talked about is that we have anticipated that we thought that it would take four to six months for this to work its way through the FEMA process. Our goal is that, to try to shorten that down as much as possible. I understand that this community knows a lot of people within the state emergency management that can work towards pushing that forward and delivering the funding for that. And also, perhaps, we can ask FEMA that, once it goes in, and once they're comfortable with it, while it's working its way through the process, your community could ask for an advance, or you could work towards developing a new Stanley White Center.
Okay, did you use the word "advance"?
I did.
Okay, explore that with us.
That'll probably come back to haunt me for saying that.
Oh, I hope it does. But I hope we get, I hope we knock three months or a year off for the process, but let's hear about this advance.
They don't like to give out advances.
Oh, please give it out.
You can ask, okay? But they have an expedited funding process, but it applies to emergency work, okay?
Technically, it is an emergency.
You kind of hit the nail on the head. The best way to speed this up is just like we did with Irene, get on the telephone, get in your cars, drive to Washington, drive to Raleigh, and hit your contacts and say how important this building is, and how the community needs this building, and that certainly has a lot of weight, and they can push things through. I mean, we were, I think it was during Irene, we actually were receiving, instead of 75, 25 payments, we were receiving 90 and 10, because of our contacts that we made and...
You didn't get it played nice, though, you did it being a servant.
Yeah, you have to, and then you have to be prepared to follow up on your appeals and fight your appeals, you know? They don't want to mess with appeals. You know, they'll say no, and you say you appeal, and then sometimes they'll, you know... We won every appeal that we had during Irene, except for one, didn't we, Mark? You know, except for one. And we actually gave up on that one, we kind of just said, "We're better off," you know?
Well, it's unfortunate that you do have to appeal, and when you do appeal and you win, it's indicative of the fact that you won it. That means that somebody else made a mistake, and they should be working to correct that so it doesn't happen again, but that's a very slow process. Mayor, in answer to your question, I think that the best thing that you could get out of the Stanley White Center would be the permission from FEMA to be able to start work on that project before the full funding and obligation part has been run through FEMA, because of the nature of the facility and its uses in the community here. However, and to work towards accelerating the process to work its way through the FEMA system, through contacts and many other ways. And I will shed you, I will shed you some light on this, okay? The process that you're talking about, we pushed one for $57.5 million through the FEMA system in 35 days in Texas, and it was 10 phone calls a day, and it was tracking where it was within the FEMA system and finding out who it was and what their phone number was to get it to move through. It was a very contentious thing, but I think the point that I want to make here is, it can be done.
Well, we want to do it, and we'll do whatever it takes, go to DC, Raleigh.
Who is the state contact? Do you know who is the state contact for the 428?
Ray Baerisboober.
Well, he's got someone, he's got somebody.
The local state contact that has been assigned to the city, his name is Jeffrey Welker from the State Emergency Management Department.
I mean, do we need to make a New Bern Boardorman resolution of, time is of the essence?
I don't believe that you do. I mean, it couldn't hurt. The best thing that you could do at this point in time is to ask, is to get the costs for a new Stanley White Center developed, get them done accurately.
Okay, so let me ask you this again, you're the consultant, and I'm not. I've never been in that type of consulting, but this storm happened September 14th, and we're just now getting around to an architect doing some costs. Now, if that problem could have been expedited sooner, you know, I don't want to see those type of delays in the future. If it's my fault, I didn't do something right, I need to know it and take full responsibility for it. If staff didn't do it, if you didn't do it, we want a resolution, a closure, fruition to this problem, sooner than later. If we have to, if we can get some means, like I say, of an approval, a systematic approval of a hypothetical model of what needs to go back there at 11 feet, not 10, then the board can discuss the possibility of interim interest financing, knowing that we have in file a letter of reimbursement. And then I think this board is going to want to kind of move forward.
Right.
But we're willing to do anything it takes, because this is very important to the citizens of New Bern, that that Stanley White so get back operational again.
I'm fully aware of that, and it's certainly well noted in regards to the delays in the timeframes. I don't have any immediate answers for you, but your point is well noted to make sure that there are...
Well, I might just be speaking by myself, but does the board feel the same way about this?
Mayor, I appreciate everything that you said tonight about Stanley White and moving forward, and I would support if we had an approval to go and take a loan to start doing something that we were able to...
You know, maybe we can divide it up. If a couple of us need to go to Raleigh and talk to this gentleman, or go to Raleigh, a couple of us talk to somebody above his head, then that's what we need to do. But I guess we can't talk to anybody until we know what the cost is. We got to let the architect get the money he pays.
Got to let him do his job, yeah.
And do that job, and then from there, we know the money we're dealing with.
And you've got to file, you've got to submit it. So, you know, the timeframe that it's been six months, I, doing FEMA work for the city for years now, I think it's moving along fairly quickly, considering what you have to go through and the hoops that you have to go through, and the things that are, you're trying, first thing you had to do, you had to get somebody to get in there and find out what the value of the building is and how much damage done, then you have to get the insurance adjusters onboard to do the same thing, and that takes a lot of time. I mean, I think things are moving, I think the 428 process is moving fairly quick. I think the most important thing that we can do is the day that you submit it, is let this man right here start making his phone calls and his letter writing and stuff to get, to get people to look at it, put it on the top of the stack, get them to look at it, and get it submitted as quickly as possible. That is how this, that works.
Is that your motion, sir? If you could put that in format or give direction, give a stamp of direction.
Well, I think, I think the day that Corey submits it, the city manager should just say, "Hey, it's been submitted, y'all do your job." You know, y'all get your order.
Can I add one thing, too? And I, to be honest with you, I just thought of this, and I want to ask Corey whether this is possible or not, that I think may help what you're kind of hitting at, Mayor, is when it comes time for this submission to occur, that the architect and engineer are drafting together this estimate that we will submit to determine what the replacement value of the facility is. Would it be possible at that point to automatically submit, along with that, a request for them to at least approve architectural and engineering services, understanding that the building was substantially damaged, it's going to have to be raised or demoed and rebuilt? Understandably, that would require architectural and engineering services, so maybe we could at least get an advance on the architect and engineering services, so that they could get started on the work, on the massing diagrams, the community meetings, everything that needs to happen to determine what the recreational amenities that will be provided in this new facility, and that will help expedite a little bit of the process, rather than us waiting six months to determine when they get it approved, and then at that point, we have to start all of the architectural and engineering and community meetings and everything else. So, we kind of be running simultaneously down the same path.
The bottom line is that we can, we should, we can start doing that anytime you want to, because whether 428 grant comes into play or not, we've got to do something with the building. So, you know, we've got to have an architect to start working on the designs and everything else, too, whether whoever's going to pay for it. We're going to replace it if we don't get the 428 funds, we're going to still replace the building.
Right, and the reason why I say that is because we, at that point, would be required to do an RFQ again, and it would have to go out on many brooks, you know, because of many brooks, and it would have to go out for a bid, we would have to negotiate that and everything else. So, if that's something, if we can wait 30 days to get that estimate back, or we could do it at the next meeting if the board wants to spend that money now, that's what I'm getting at. If you want to run some simultaneous paths, if you want to expedite what you want to do, then we're either going to have to come out of our own pocket to pay for that, or we could potentially submit it in 30 days with, whenever we submit the request, there's no guarantee that it's going to get approved, but I'm just throwing out options to try to meet what the mayor and the board sounds like wants to happen.
I'm going to do a question.
Yes, sir. I agree with everything that's been said tonight. There was an interesting question that was asked Friday night, and I know, obviously, staff hasn't had time to research it, it's been sort of short order, but there was a question asked about the historic nature of that building. And I don't know if you can go back retroactively to make a request for a building like that, but before we start demoing and getting estimates to rebuild, I would at least like for somebody to verify that that building is not considered historic or can't be considered historic, which obviously would expedite getting it back open and operational again. So, again, not asking for the answer tonight, because I don't think you have it unless you do, but maybe, you know, you could shoot us all an email as soon as you find that out, because I would certainly like to know.
I would like to know as well.
It's a process. You're going to have to apply to Shippo State Historic Preservation Office to individually list the building, unless you create a district, which they probably wouldn't do, like they did, it's exactly what they did with Craven Terrace. They individually listed Craven Terrace, went through all the paperwork, got the designation, and they did it based on the architectural style and the fact that it was 50 years older. So, there's several components. I mean, you certainly can apply, but you have to meet those criteria in applying, and I don't know how long...
And they're right now, the age does not meet the criteria.
So, it would then have to be a unique architectural style, or, you know, a historic event happened there. Now, Mr. White is a historic person in the sense of his commitment and leadership in the community. That doesn't mean the place is significant, if it was potentially a statue of him or something, might be a little bit different. But again, Shippo, when I say Shippo, the State Historic Preservation Office would have all of that criteria, and obviously, moving clocks could drag your Mr. Jerry.
I'm all about the community engagement piece. We spent a long time Friday night letting everybody, you know, vent and give us their thoughts and opinions, and as far as the communication piece goes, I think one thing that admittedly, I think we failed at through this whole process is sometimes communicating. We have an idea that's been mentioned, "Yeah, let's think about that," and we never kind of closed that loop. So, even if it is nothing more than an email to this board or a Facebook post to say, "We researched it, it does not qualify, and here are the reasons why," we can check that box and let's move on.
Let me check that box on that. The historical significance of the Craven Terrace was such that even though it was historical, and it did get historical tax credits, 42 units were demolished, because they were in a flooded area, and the flooded area they were in was higher than the flooded area of Stanley White. So, I don't think the historical significance of that building matters zero, matters zero, because if it floods, it would be like Craven Terrace, it needs to be demolished. That's why 42 units got demolished over there, right?
It was my understanding, as a result of that issue being raised for the historic structure, that the city was going to work in a parallel path to this to see if it did qualify as a historic structure to be able to go through, to perhaps grant some exemptions to having to demolish the building, as to it being in a floodplain and so on, there's all those issues, but the issue in regards to historic structure was raised, and I believe the city gave their commitment to working in that direction to see if that was an avenue that could be done. It doesn't meet the age criteria, but I am not a historic preservation person, so anything that I would say on that would be just a guesstimate on my part.
Corey, one more thing. Can the city apply to have a temporary structure put on, up there in that parking lot, not a gym or anything like that, but just maybe office staff area, storage area, so our rec department can do neighborhood parking lot basketball games and stuff like that? I mean, is that possible, to get some assistance with some playground stuff?
We explored that avenue and possibility. Foster provided us with a list of all the activities and uses for the particular facility, and there was, out of all the activities and uses there, there was one that popped up that it was used as a after-school program at some point in time. that it was used as a, as a after-school program at some point in time. After-school programs were, would be the only one that we could think of that would classify for temporary funding from FEMA. FEMA authorizes temporary facilities for what they classify as, as critical needs facilities, and those are pretty clearly defined. It's schools, fire departments, and others. And it also clearly says that community recreational centers do not qualify as critical facilities. However, despite the fact that this was a, a community activity center, it did have a use of, of that, and we are exploring with them as to whether FEMA would allow some, some temporary facilities for, to be able to reinstitute that use there.
Okay. Anybody else? I don't think we've got any other questions or comments. We appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cory.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate all you're doing. Let's go to item number seven, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven is a public hearing and consideration to adopt a resolution amending the FY18 CDBG allocation of funds. Staff has determined that it's necessary to amend the approved CDBG program for fiscal year 2018. CDBG funds originally budgeted for public services, affordable housing, housing rehabilitation, and demolition will be reallocated as follows. It is requested that they take and reduce the budget of general administration from forty-eight thousand five hundred to forty-two thousand seven hundred seventy-one dollars. Public set aside, public service set aside, eliminate that budget of thirty thousand seven hundred seventy-one dollars. Affordable housing, we wish to revise the activity description from construction of new affordable housing for sale to new affordable rental housing. We want to increase that budget as well from thirty-two thousand to two hundred thousand. Housing rehabilitation line item, we want to eliminate that budget of one hundred thousand. And demolition, we want to eliminate that budget of thirty-two thousand. There's a memo that's included in your packet, basically to summarize, the, the reason for amending the FY18 CDBG allocation of funds is to assist in the redevelopment commission's efforts with creating affordable housing, especially rental housing that is in dire need right now in New Bern with all of the loss of inventory that we have throughout our city. And also, it's a program which they're developing in partnership with Habitat Homes, who have been a proven benefit here in our city with building homes throughout our city for those who, who can afford them and affordable housing. So if there's any questions, myself, Mr. Ruggieri, be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I don't have any questions. I'm going to open a public hearing, but do you-
Yeah, I just have a question.
Go ahead.
Just to understand, so instead of building new housing, we would build housing, but it would be for rentals? Gotcha, okay.
That's correct.
Is that, is that for, is that a short-term fix? That you'll be building these houses? Or is this something that is going to be part of the redevelopment commission, which is going to take a longer term for building these houses?
Yes.
It's a longer-term vision of the redevelopment commission. It was always something contemplated. This, I want to say, opportunity presented itself early where we, we got in a position of having to spend this money, and so we took advantage of the opportunity, probably be about a, maybe a year earlier than we anticipated. But moving forward, this is something that we'll be programming, two houses a year for this type of program for the next five years.
So, so with us taking the fiscal year 2018 CDBG program funds-
Yes.
-and reallocating them, now that's not going to kick any current residents that's within that CDBG program out?
Correct.
Put them delayed behind, they will be delayed?
This is FY18, FY18 funds, doesn't affect FY19 funds.
Okay. So those, those residences already scheduled to get some type of rehabilitation or whatever they need for their homes will not be set back?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ruggieri, is this part of the program with Habitat where they will take potentially a dilapidated house instead of tearing it down? They may rehab it and use these funds to rehab it so that it could be rented? Or would this all be new construction?
This program before you right now is just new construction. As we move forward, that's the type of program. We can definitely, we can definitely do things like that.
One last question. For the rental process, who holds the note? Who would be responsible for receiving the, the rent that the individuals pay? Habitat or the city?
Okay, so we're getting into the details here.
Am I not supposed to ask that?
So, this, this, the program, the amendment before you will allow us to move forward and contract with Habitat for Humanity to build up to five homes for rental. At that, we are concurrently working with the program to fill those units with renters. We're working with Habitat right now to utilize their existing programs that they have in financial literacy and general citizenship, to put people through that program and then use voucher system from Twin Rivers Opportunities to give those people vouchers and voucher into these, to these homes.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Thank you for that information. Mr. Ruggieri, so currently, there's no type of plans in place to try to fulfill some of the housing needs we have right now, short-term, to get some of our residents that are still displaced from their homes? I mean, have-
No, we're building four homes.
What about, so there's no, maybe like tiny houses or something?
Sure.
Is there any, any plans in place to temporarily, I mean, for a short-term fix? Or, because we still have residents, citizens of the city that are still in hotels, so are there any plans that-
Well, when you get into the short-term fix conversation, we can't be looking at CDBG funds.
Okay.
Because it's not a short-term program. It's, and we looked into that, and it becomes the issue of ownership, where they go, it's a short-term issue. What happens in the long term? Who owns it? What happens to it? Those are the issues that, with the federal funds, it really muddies the water of the conversation. Right now, we've just, we've been presented with two hundred and two thousand dollars that we need to spend by, or at least have programmed by May the second. So we're taking advantage of what we have in front of us to try to address the issue that you're talking about. The, the final solution is going to involve a lot of different conversations and different pots of money and different programs to address it efficiently and successfully.
Okay, this time, there's no other questions. I'm going to open a public hearing. Anybody from the public that would like to come up, ask questions, make comments, statements about this item, you're more than welcome to come up this time.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing. Second.
Motion and second to close the public hearing. Is there a discussion? See, and then, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, the same motion carries.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution to amend the FY2018 CDBG allocation of funds. Second.
Motion by Alman Bingle, second by Alman Harris. Is there a discussion? Yes, sir.
Mr. Ruggieri, I waited till you got all the way back so I'd ask you this question. Maybe I missed it, Alman Harris's question. Who holds the notes for these houses? Who will be managing them?
Ultimately, the redevelopment commission.
The redevelopment-
Right now, the city owns it, owns, there's about seven parcels that would, that we're looking at right now that we've put through the vetting process to be approved for federal funding. You have to do architectural and environmental work. That will, can be, could be up to five units on those parcels. The city owns two of them outright. City county owns the other five, and I've sent an email to the city attorney to request to have the county essentially give their interest, which they do, which they have done when we donated parcels to Habitat to build on, to don't, to give their interest in those properties to the city. The city will own it until such time the redevelopment commission boundary is approved, which may, I think the first meeting in May is what we're, we're shooting for on that, and at which time we've, we've talked a few times at this board level, then the board will then transfer their interest in all the properties in the redevelopment commission boundary to the redevelopment commission. Those properties would be included.
Okay, thank you.
It's a long answer.
I have one last.
Easy question.
Um, shoot, what was it?
Get off.
Oh, is this the first time any municipality has done this?
No.
Okay, I'll just check it. Mr. Ruggieri, I would just like to say thank you to you and your staff because I know y'all have been working tirelessly with all of the mitigations and, and all of the, with the redevelopment commi, commission as well. So thank you to you and your staff.
I do have one question. During this process, I want to make sure always, and I'm sure you are, you've got some means of paper trail that when you're making this type of amendment, it, it is in the spirit of the CDBG grant that for you, for us to just take that and, you know, make the decision that we want to do something that's outside of the perimeters of what the grant is or whatever, we would, we would lose it or pay it back. So this, do you, in this process, have you talked with somebody, or have you got in writing that it's okay where the funding mechanism's coming from?
Absolutely.
That we make this amendment?
Yes, sir. Met with our, with our HUD rep while I was up in Chapel Hill a couple weeks ago, spoke with him on the phone. And the process we're following now is the process that you go through, the HUD mandated process to change your annual action plan if you have a major substantive deviation from your plan. We are following that exact process. So, yeah, no, this isn't actually, it sounds, it's not something that New Bern has done in the past, but redevelopment commissions are, they do a lot of development work in other parts. They own large properties, they own supermarkets, they, they get into a lot of different types of real estate deals in order to address what their community need is specifically. And everybody, every community is different. We just happen to have a serious-
Well, along those lines, what would be helpful to the board? I don't know, I saw it in here, but if you had a, you know, a letter from whoever is in charge on, on the state or federal level that it's okay to do that, would, you know, when we're making these decisions, it would be more comfortable to me that we come back at some future date and find out we somehow violated the CDBG grant and-
Yeah, they, they review all this stuff.
Do you get that in writing, though?
I can, I can certainly ask, sure.
I'm just asking because I think that would be a good checks and balances. Alman Kenzie.
HUD, I mean not HUD, Habitat. How many houses did they build last year? Do they have a goal of adding maybe two or three more homes to what they-
They have a pretty lofty goal with Mike Williams yesterday. I believe in their five-year plan in the entire area that they cover, which is, I know Craven, I'm not sure if they cover other counties, they want to do one hundred and sixty homes.
And how many homes do we tear down a year?
Anywhere from five to twelve.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
And just to add to that also, Mr. Kenzie, as part of that lofty goal that they have, their executive director and, and board chair have submitted to me a request for some additional lots that if you, I think the previous board, if you recall those who were on it, we approved about ten lots at a time because it was coming in like one at a time, and we asked them just to put us together a big list of properties that they wanted. We approved like ten of them at a time. They have submitted to me another list of those, and those are in process right now to ensure that we're, they're FEMA, they're not FEMA lots, they're available lots, and all that kind of different stuff. And then, so that will be probably on one of your subsequent board meetings, either the next one or the next, after we have those discussions.
Well, they have caught up because before, we was tearing down more houses than they was building. So now I think we have caught up now. We're building more houses now than we're tearing down. So that's very good.
Alman Bingle.
I want to call a question. Thank you. You calling a question? There's a motion and a second.
Okay.
Roll call vote.
You ready? Start roll call with Alman Bingle.
Alman Bingle.
Yes.
Alman Harris.
Yes.
Alman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Alaw. Alman Kenzie.
Yes.
Alman Dass.
Yes.
Alman Odom.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight is a discussion on noise ordinance. This time, I want to turn it over to Attorney Davis. He's going to discuss and propose changes with regards to the city noise ordinance.
Mayor, members of the board, you have before you a draft document. You'll recall at our last meeting, you directed us to start the process of taking a fresh critical look at our noise ordinance and presenting a new, more modern model. You've probably heard me say in prior meetings that for the last many decades, New Bern, like the majority of other cities in North Carolina, has the traditional noise ordinance. It is the clearly audible standard that's been supported by case law for many, many decades, consistent with other cities of our size, Wilson, Rocky Mount, Asheville. But as I've been saying for the last probably ten, twenty years, there was going to come a day where we needed to modernize our noise ordinance, and we're probably at that moment. So the first step in that process is, is to give you the fundamentals of how the more modern system works. I'm not going to read this to you, but I'll just talk to you about it globally so that we can all get on the same page and understand how this new process will work. We start by setting allowable noise allowances, okay? We do that by zone, residential, commercial, industrial. So your allowance in that zone is permission to go up to a certain decibel level. That is for what is called steady-state noise. Steady-state noise is noise produced playing music, whether it's live or recorded, amplified or not. Public events, wedding receptions, those are, those events create steady-state noise. So if you're having something like that, there is a decibel level that you cannot exceed. There is no law about what that level needs to be. That is purely a political process that each local government can decide for itself. There is no law about what days the decibels have to be a certain level. There's no timeframe. Most cities, and you'll see in the packet that the clerk sent an email to you, I prepared for you a chart that lays out decibel levels for roughly ten cities. Most cities break it down by, by zone and by time, daytime, nighttime. Daytime typically runs until ten or eleven o'clock at night. Nighttime runs from ten or eleven at night to about seven the next morning. A number of cities take a further slice out of that, and they'll have different times and different decibel levels for weekends or holidays, and you can define those however you want. So what I've given you in the first phase of this draft is the model for the allowable levels with blanks in those levels. You've got your chart about what other cities think is reasonable and believe works for their cities. I will spare you the speech on what decibels are and the math behind the decibels. In my experience, the best way to understand that is to get your sound meter or get your phone with a free app that will come very close to a sound meter decibel reading and start recording outdoor sounds. The difference in fifty and sixty can only be explained when you're standing there and you hear fifty and then you hear sixty. And, and I would encourage you to do that. You might want to get with, with PD, I know, I don't know how many meters they have, probably not enough for each of you, but you might get with an officer who has a calibrated meter, compare it to your free downloaded meter, and see how many degrees you're off so that you'll know that compared to a real meter, you might be three high or three low, but that'll at least get you in the ballpark as you start exploring sounds, okay? I would also encourage you, I believe you've been emailed a PDF of this document. I did that so that you could share it with constituents, those who are interested in the issue. They can understand how this works, they can do their, their own homework and provide feedback to you, because I know each of you have quite unique sound and noise issues in your respective wards. So share that idea and concept, and over the next, I would expect four to eight weeks, we can come to some kind of consensus about what those magic numbers need to be and the timeframes, days and times for those numbers. I can tell you, having done this a number of times for local governments, the end game is to get everyone equally unhappy, okay? So, so just be patient, do your own experiments, and, and we'll trudge through this. That will be the biggest change to the, to the modernized process. Thereafter, we are still going to have what is in the law called nuisance noise, and that is, that is noise that is not steady-state. It may be- It may be dogs barking, it may be bells ringing. Those kind of nuisance noises will still be illegal, depending on what they are and what times they happen. So, we've still got that component, although that, that section has been modernized. We have exemptions to the rules. There's always exemptions for ambulances and church bells and those kind of things. Those are in here as well. I've added a section for, for you and all of us to be thinking about. A lot of cities have noise permits. That is a permit that typically lets a person exceed the steady state noise allowance by up to about 10 decibels for a, for a date and time specific. I don't want that permit process to confuse you because a lot of folks will read that and think, well, great, I'll just go get a permit every Friday and Saturday and have my louder noise. Those permits typically have a cap of a certain number per year, whether it's one, two, three, or four permits per year. Some cities do it by total hours per year. You can get as many permits as you want as long as the total hours doesn't exceed 10 or 20 hours per year. So, that's something to think about. To me, um, I would be thinking about those permits in the context of the decibel levels that you think are appropriate and whether 10 decibels is really going to matter. The permit process is going to be cumbersome for some city department, probably PD. So, before we create a significant administrative process for them, let's make sure that it's going to be worth it. So, that's something for us to think about. And finally, you'll see in there, um, my proposed enforcement section. I'm suggesting to you that, that we stick with our process of having a first verbal warning, trying to work with folks so that they understand what the rule is and how they can control their noise. And then we start escalating from there, from I think $100 up to $1,000 over five different violations to ultimately, we start finding the landlord, if the landlord is not the actual tenant, um, to getting injunctions. So, um, my, my hope and thinking is that we, we work with folks verbally and try to solve the problem. And if not, we escalate from there so that folks know that we're serious about addressing the problem. With that said, um, our agenda deadline for the next meeting is this coming Friday. We, we are not going to be ready next meeting to do anything. But it would be nice at the next meeting to, to, to get some more feedback on, on what we're thinking about these, these decibel levels so that we can start building some consensus. So, possibly in the next four to eight weeks. And, and my hope certainly is, um, by our last meeting of May, to have a, a final product that you can adopt. And certainly sooner if you're ready. All good?
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about this side? Let's go to item number nine, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Item number nine is consideration of the board to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a architectural and engineering contract for city-owned buildings damaged in Hurricane Florence. As Corey mentioned, um, during some of his presentation, uh, this, this is the item that he was rela, uh, alluding to is this was a request for qualifications that were sought for architectural and engineering services for city-owned buildings that were damaged due to Hurricane Florence. Three proposals were received and reviewed after scoring. MBF Architects, PA received the overall highest score. The contract amount is not to exceed $57,900. There's a memo that's included in your packet from Mr. Sabatelli, and we're asking, uh, and requesting for your consideration and approval of this. Good night. Any questions, I'll be happy.
Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an architectural and engineering contract for city-owned buildings damaged in Hurricane Florence.
Second. Okay, there are motion and second. Any discussion? Anybody, Alderman asked you?
No, no, I thought you were going to say me, but Kenzie seconded it.
Oh, okay, great. Okay, if there's no discussion, we'll have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Motion carries, let's go to item number nine. Uh, item number 10.
I might have missed one there, sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Item number 10 is consideration of the board to accept a petition to annex property identified as tax parcel IDs and a portion of 8-209-13001 owned by Weyerhauser in our company and adopt a resolution to call for a public hearing on the annexation. Uh, this request was dated March 13th, 2019. Weyerhauser in our company is seeking annexation of approximately 8.13 acres, which includes Lot 4 of Craven 30 West, West New Bern Parkway and Downey Drive, and a portion of tax parcel ID 8-209-13001 lying between West New Bern Parkway, Downey Drive, and NC Highway 43. If the petition is accepted, the board will, uh, is asked to call for a public hearing on the 9th of April, 2019 and receive comments on this annexation. There's a memo in your packet that's included from Development Services and Ms. Potts. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, so we have questions.
No, I'm just curious, is this part of their, I mean, I thought they had annexed all of that into cities. Is this just, so the big piece of Craven 30 or West 30, whatever they're calling, has not been annexed in?
This, this is not even the big piece. This is a, this is a portion that is across the street.
So, it's across the way?
Yes.
So, they're just, are, is it for residential?
Um, no, highway patrol station.
Ah, okay.
And, and if you recall, uh, there was only a portion of the larger tract that's to the east and north of 70 that was annexed in. And at that time, it was going to be the movie theater, or, or the film creators, whatever it was. That was the only portion that was, that was annexed in at that time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we accept a petition to annex property identified as tax parcel IDs 8-209-24,000, 8-209-24,001, and a portion of 8-209-13,001 owned by Weyerhauser Company.
Second. Okay, you have a motion and second is there discussion?
I just have a question. What ward does this go into?
Very interesting, um, where, where this lies. Right now, uh, if I was envisioning this, I think the, um, the, the northeast quadrant, it's really kind of a good crossroads. And, and ultimately, uh, at some point, these boundaries may not matter. But as of right now, if I was, if I was a betting man, that's the way these things would go, I would say that anything that's in the northeast quadrant of that interchange is probably going to go to Ward 4 and Mr. Kenzie. Anything that's in the northwest quadrant is probably going to go to, uh, uh, Alderman Best in Ward 5. And then everything that's probably south, it would be my, my thoughts that it would probably go to Ward 6 since he had, uh, Alderman Odom has, uh, Craven Forest.
Okay, so at the time we annex, the public hearing comes and we vote to annex. Do you immediately then assign it, or does it just hang out there in the vote?
I might need to ask.
I believe we do assign it.
I think we do.
You do assign it?
Yes, I believe we do assign it. Yes, ma'am.
Just curious, thank you.
Okay, ma'am, we have a motion and second, is that correct? Any other discussions?
Yes, sir. I want to be clear with the attorney, I did not add in my motion to call for a public hearing. Do I need to amend my motion to add that?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Second.
On April the 9th, 2019.
Okay. All right, any, any other questions? I have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. Stevens, item number 11.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 11 is consideration of the board to adopt a resolution to ban the box in support of fair housing practices. As you recall, the board's February 12th, 2019, meeting and presentation and discussion ensued on the ban the box movement. After researching and converging with colleagues, the city attorney is here now and he's going to, uh, put together, or has put together a draft resolution to ban the box in support of the fair housing practices. And, uh, we're going to go through that right now, and if the board has any kind of questions, uh, we'll, we'll answer those at that time. Uh, also in your packet, uh, there is, um, a draft policy, administrative policy, since I'm charged with the administrative policy, some portions of things. But at this time, I want to turn it over to Attorney Davis to let him go through, uh, a lot of what has, has happened since that February 12th meeting, which is a lot of research and a lot of, of questions to a lot of different municipalities. So, I'm going to turn it over to him.
Mayor, members of the board, you have before you a resolution that, that certainly bans the box and, and we think, um, goes a few steps further, and, and those steps matter, we believe. As we've reached out across the state and, and looked at cities and towns, counties that have banned the box, a good many of them have, have done that. And, um, and that's a great first step. But we believe the more material step is, is reflecting critically on the positions we have and, and the type of background investigation that is best paired with that position. Because if you just ban the box and continue ultimately to have to struggle with a criminal record, you're still, still dealing with a certain amount of subjectivity. So, um, we took the time that you gave us over the last four to six weeks to, to start the process of, of, from the ground up, looking at the various positions, trying to build what we're calling a matrix and taking each position and, and ascertaining what, what is in the public interest? What is, what does the government expect, what do our citizens expect for that position? And with, with a goal of trying to identify positions and a, and a certain number of jobs that would not require a criminal background check at all. So far, and the process has just started, and I don't want to get too far ahead of staff, but I, I believe we're up to maybe 20 different jobs that would not require a criminal background check at all. Um, over the next two to four weeks, staff will be going through that process. That number may well grow, we certainly hope it does. That, that is not a new process or a new step. It's certainly what the EOC encourages and recommends, it's in the guidelines. It's just in my experience that a lot of folks don't, don't, don't take a beat to think critically about that step. You know, we get, we get caught up, um, in just running the city and believing we're doing the right thing. And, and I do believe we are. Staff goes through those records. I think they do a great job of, of, of putting those, the, any issues in a record in perspective and, and hiring a great many folks that have issues in their record. But what we don't know when we do that is how many folks are being deterred from even applying for a job. So, this policy that city manager and I have been working on has a provision that for positions that will require a background check, the advertisement will say that. But it's important for folks to know, if it doesn't say that, there will not be a background check. So, what, what we want is to encourage folks and have a, a, a transparent system so that folks will know not to be deterred to apply for the job. And even if you do have a record, understand that that won't be an issue potentially until the very last step, until after a conditional offer has been made. So, two big global points. We are not creating a, a, a new program, right? We're following the law that's always been out there, but I think we've taken some steps that greatly improve the process. So that we identify positions that don't require checks. If they do require a check, then those applicants will go through a competitive interviews process just like they currently do. If an offer is made, we then alert the person that we will proceed with the background check. And if there are issues, they will then be given an opportunity to explain it any way they can with outside documents, certificates of relief, whatever they might have that might help us understand and put that issue in context. So, that's the path that we're on. Your job is, is adopting the resolution that not only bans the box, but takes that step further that directs the city manager to implement the policy and to, to do that critical analysis by position, which he has started. His job, once that resolution is adopted, is to finalize the policy. And we've given you a draft that he may well sign tomorrow or the next day. And from there, staff will start implementing this. I can tell you that the, the box will be banned tomorrow or, or when, or Thursday. We think within a week or two, we'll have certain positions rolling out. And over a period of two to four weeks, the analysis will be done and we will be fully on the new system. With all of that said, questions, comments?
Well, what are some of the sample job descriptions that will be, you would not have to have a background check? What you're talking about?
I will pass on, is it maintenance supervisor?
Yeah, I think, uh, we're probably looking at maintenance supervisor, maybe some of our, uh, treatment plan operators, uh, you know, things that, and, and the reason why I say that is if you look at, uh, certain, certain job descriptions and, and without going into a ton of detail, because the analysis still needs to be compiled and completed. But, you know, you take into account, uh, uh, finance directors and accountants. I mean, obviously, we need to do a background check to ensure that there's been no embezzlement, there's been no, any kinds of things whenever you're talking about, uh, the stewardship of, of taxpayer funds. Any of our IT, civil service, uh, police department employees and sworn employees, which the sworn employees are, are, are held to state statute anyway, so we're required to do criminal background checks on them. But any of those IT positions, because they see the information that, uh, is, is the criminal backgrounds, the criminal histories, and, uh, deal with a lot of the data that the police department have, then they're also subject to, to those background checks as well as the civil service employees within that police department. So, as, as the, as we go through and now, uh, do the analysis on all of the different job descriptions, obviously, at that point, we'll be making the determinations. But as, as the seat attorney identified, there's about 20, and forgive me, I didn't have all of those with me tonight. I don't know if Sonia is here that may have a, a list of some of those. But to add to that, uh, what Scott said, it's, it's a policy that we have, like the draft policy that we have right now is an administrative order that's, that's, uh, issued by me. And, uh, it's the, the, the human resources department, Sonia and her staff would be, uh, required to, to maintain and implement, uh, uh, the, the practices of this administrative policy as well, department heads. And, uh, uh, basically, it goes through, you know, our definitions, our procedures. And if a background check comes back with some information, then at that point, there are, uh, some documents in here, some forms with consumer notifications, applicant authorization and consent to release of information, the pre-adverse action summary of your rights under the Fair Credit Reporting Act, because, you know, credit's going to be a, a, an, an issue with some of these other positions, especially finance-type positions as well. So, um, so some of those things are what's included in this policy. And, and once again, um, I'll be prepared to enact that relatively quickly. We will ban the box, uh, effective immediately. But, uh, some of these positions that we have throughout the city will still require background checks even before, and they will be identified, but they will be, uh, from especially your IT, police and police civil service, uh, positions, those will be done from the very beginning because some of the issues that we run into is this extended period of time that we have to go through these very extensive background checks. And oftentimes, we lose those employees, uh, to other places if we do not get through that process as quickly as possible. And if we have to do that on the backside or the backend after we've already made an approval, then by the time we go through all that process, starting at that point, they're gone.
Mark, the, the employees, again, the, the sample of employees that you would not do any background on at all, did the department heads work with you and help you to, help decide whether they thought that was, um, necessary or not? Or whether they thought that they might?
They certainly will be having input, yes.
We certainly have, and I know Sonia, you've reached out to some and had some discussions. Let me, let me ask Sonia to come up here, I know she's done a lot of work with this as well.
Good evening, ma'am, members of the board. Yes, we, we've done quite a bit of work on this. And so, what we've done is we've gone through every single job classification to determine where that position may fall, what type of check might that position need. So, we have reached out to numerous department heads to find out specifically what are the essential functions? If there are some things that we don't know, we have reached out to them to find out what are the essential functions of the job so we can determine where we feel like they best fit. And then we can make a recommendation to the, to the manager as to what we think they may need for his concurrence.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say first and foremost, thank you to the city attorney and the HR and all the staff that worked diligently to create this policy. I'm very proud of our city and what we're going to do. And if there's no more comments, I'd like to, uh, make, um, what am I supposed to say? I forgot.
Motion to adopt a resolution.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution to ban the box in support of fair hi, hiring practices.
Second.
You have a motion, and second is a discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you to Cory Purdy. He's over there today. Cory, thank you for, you know, your efforts in bringing this forward and all the work you do in the community. Thank you. Another step forward.
All right, Scott, item number twelve, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor members of the board. Item number twelve is consideration by the Board to adopt a resolution awarding the contract for Trent Road Substation. Bank A of Trent Road Substation Transformer has been in service since 1960 and obviously is at the end of its useful life. On behalf of the city, power services solicited bids for replacement based on cost comparison and benefits of each option provided. After reviewing the bids, it was recommended the option identified as alternate one be chosen due to significantly lower maintenance and losses as compared to the other option. It was also recommended that the bid be awarded to WEB, which provided the best and lowest bid at a cost of $717,594 with IEE standard impedents. While WEB was not the first or the low first-cost bid, it was the lowest bid overall based on total ownership cost and lower losses. There's a memo that's included in your packet from Mr. Bouchard, our Director of Utilities. And just so you know, this item was budgeted during this budget year. However, the bids came in, as well as the installation cost, higher than what the approved amount was, the capital improvement that was in the budget. So, we're requesting that the Board approve this tonight so that we can get this ordered, because it takes, Charlie, what, twelve months to get this item in, I believe, if I'm not mistaken? So it takes about twelve months to get the item upon order, and then at that point, we will do the installation.
I have a couple of questions, Charlie.
Yes, sir.
Reading through the information, I was trying to decipher whether or not we were going from a Cadillac to a Chevy or something with the process. It looked like it was an overrun, and then trying to decipher the jargon, the electrical information there. Tell me, kind of break that down for me.
Well, we're going-
You did a real good job a couple of months ago. I don't remember what it was. What did he say? Did-
Extension cords.
Extension cord, yeah. You did a real good job, so.
No, we're not building the Taj Mahal here. We're going from 1960 technology to today's current technology. Pricing is very good, from what I've seen over the course of my career on the transformer. Transformer installation costs, we're still evaluating that. We're still putting together competitive bids. We estimate the installation costs are going to be around $800,000, less any of the construction work that we can do ourselves. The reason those construction costs may be so high right now is because the new transformer won't fit in the old spot. So we have to put in the infrastructure to make it fit there.
Well, how much does that cost?
Right now, we're estimating about $800,000.
No, not $800, but I mean, the retrofit, make the new one fit. Is that all part of that process?
It's all-
If it had been able to fit, how much cheaper would that have been, whatever?
If it could go back in the same spot, it would be significantly less. I don't know. I haven't calculated the cost-
I mean, you said there's no way to do that?
It won't fit. It won't. And the other part of the constraint is that we have to keep the old transformer in service as long as possible. So we need to place the new transformer, get it ready to connect to the grid, so we don't have an outage to any of our customers or put our system at risk. So, all this infrastructure really needs to be put in place. Transformer comes in, assemble it, and put it together, and then move a couple of leads over and connect it with a minimal interruption or risk to our customers.
So, from a financial standpoint, you, you know, you have, you obviously have a budget, and of course, we're looking at that next substation. I know that's totally a separate thing, but in any way, that you don't see any rate structure changes or anything because of this capital need?
No, I believe they were financially sound to move forward with both the-
And what would be the life expectancy of this transformer versus the 1960 model?
When we do our financial projections, it's about twenty years. But realistically, we'd like to get about fifty years out of these units. It's all depending on how heavily they're loaded, and it all comes down to temperature, and how well the temperature's controlled in the unit.
Okay. Mr. Davis, do you have a question?
Yes, sir. I know that you guys have done a lot of research with this, and I like what the mayor said, with the extension cord and the vacuum cleaner, you made things very simple. But I just, I have to ask this question because, looking at the grid of the bid tabulation, it looks like base bid number one was the cheapest base bid, or alternative number one was similar to the base bid, but there was some modification, so that explains the cost of service. Base bid number two, almost every vendor was higher, except for the one vendor we chose for the bid we're recommending, and they were actually cheaper on that one. Do you, are we, I know you guys have vetted this, you've made the right decision, but I just, my conscience, I have to ask, because it's almost $80,000 cheaper, and it looked like all the other ones were a higher cost, except for this one.
The base bid number two would have been the Cadillac.
So it's, so the vendor that we're recommending, WEG, is $650,868 for base bid two. Base bid one, with the alternative that we're recommending to go with, is $731,000. So that's why I was-
With the alter, you gotta add an alternate on base bid number two. Because that takes you up to $834,000. So, it is more.
So what you're saying is base bid one with the alternate is better than base bid two, even though the base bid two from almost every other vendor is cheaper?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Just one other question. That 11.35 percent specified impedance, tell me a little bit about that.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you-
To match the other transformers, 11.35 percent specified impedance was specified to match the other transformer in the substation. Is that basically, what are we saying there?
There's design provisions in the new specification, so that it's compatible with the other transformer in the substation and for future expansions, if that transformer was ever to be replaced. So, you have to match what they call impedances, if you want to run these units in parallel. And that's what we did. We designed it for that.
Yes, ma'am.
And that resulted in a cost savings, actually.
So, so how many more transformers? Are there four more within the city?
In my strategic plan, I would be recommending the purchase of four more, correct?
And they're all within that same, came into service back in the 60s?
No, not all of them. One would be relocating in 80s, 1980s generation, buying a brand-new one, and then the other two would be forecasted for the new substation that we've been talking about.
So what timeframe are you looking at for actually adding on these other transformers?
As fast as we can move it. I probably will not be ready to come back here and speak to that and answer all your questions for another month or two at least. I need to get this transformer awarded, finish up the construction bids, look at our finances. So I'm not, I'm trying to do this at a manageable pace, and also financially, some of these costs aren't going to come in for, in the transformer for nine months. So.
Do you pretty much have an absolute on this, or was there any contingency factor on these, the implementation of this?
There's contingency factor in the construction side of my estimate of 12 percent, less the transformer. There was no contingencies put in the transformer number at this point, because it's a solid bid.
So you think we could be 12 percent to do that on this?
I would hope so. And I really need to roll up my sleeves and see how much of this labor we can do in-house. Some of it is skill set-driven, some of it's also driven by, it's time-sensitive. And when we go to make this transfer from the old transformer to the new, we can't mess around. We gotta, we gotta have our ducks in a row. We gotta be ready to have it all tested, ready to go. We energize it, our customers are served, no interruptions.
Okay. Board got questions?
No, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution awarding the contract for the Trent Road Substation.
Second.
Motion, and second is a discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. Stevens.
Mayor, Matt asks, can we look at 15 and 16 since they apply? It's the financing and the funding for those transformers. Is that correct, Mr. Manager? Wouldn't those apply to them? And they're kind of two down the line. I thought maybe while we're talking about this now, we could, we've got Charlie here, we could speak to this.
We are amending the agenda, but make that motion and-
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we jump to item number 15 and 16 and consider those two.
Motion?
Second.
Okay. Anybody have a discussion? Seeing none, all favor the motion, say aye. Aye, all votes. Motion carries. Yes.
Just thought it would make it easier to put all that together.
Yeah.
Yes. So, Mayor and Board, item number 15 is consideration of the Board adopting ordinance establishing the 2019 Electric Improvements Project Fund. As noted earlier, the budget for FY 1819 was approved by the Board on the 12th of June 2018. The budget included $1 million for the replacement of a transformer at the Trent Road Substation. Cost of this transformer is $718,000, with installation costs that we're estimating around $882,000, for a total of approximately $1.6 million. A budget ordinance is needed to establish a project fund. The $1.6 million will be funded through a transfer of $1 million from the electric funds FY 1819 budget, and a transfer of $600,000 in its 1920 budget. As we stated, this is a 12-month order cost, and then at that point, it would be installed. So we're looking at about spring of next year before this construction will be commenced. So that's the reason why we're going to put it into the FY 1920 budget. Happy to answer any questions, and Ms. Sabatelli as well.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt the ordinance establishing 2019 Electric Improvement Project Fund.
Second.
Motion, and second is a discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 16.
Item number 16, Mayor members of the Board, is consideration of the Board to adopt a budget ordinance amendment for the Electric Operating Fund. Relative to the previous item, the budget amendments necessary to reallocate the $1 million from power supply to interfund transfers within the Electrics Operating Fund. Happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Mayor, I make a motion we adopt the budget ordinance amendment for the Electric Operating Fund.
Second.
Motion, and a second. Is any discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, let's go to item number 13, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor members of the Board. Item number 13 is consideration of the Board to adopt a resolution to introduce and secure passage of local legislation, amending Article Three Elections of the City Charter. As you recall, Ms. Ray, Director of Craven County Board of Elections, made a presentation at the Governing Board's 12th February 2019 meeting to review the city's election options and cost analysis. As a follow-up to that presentation, interest has been expressed to move city elections to even-numbered years, which would yield substantial cost savings. The proposed resolution, that's included in your packet, seeks to introduce and secure this passage of local legislation to amend Article Three Elections of the City's Charter. The amendment would provide that elections be held every four years in even-numbered years beginning in 2020. Happy to add any kind of detail or questions, answering questions that you may have this time.
Okay. Does the Board have questions?
Um-
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. The first question I have is, if this was to pass, the 2020, would that mean that this board will go to bipartisan, no partisan, instead of it being a nonpartisan election?
We are not required to go to a partisan election, though.
So regardless, we can stay nonpartisan, no matter what year we end up on?
That's my understanding. I'm sure that others confirm that, but that's my understanding.
I'm just gonna just briefly say that I would be opposed to it in 20. If we want to go to an even year, we'd save the same amount of money in '22, should be midterms. I'm all about saving the money. We can also save money if we want to keep it in '21, just by going to November and doing plurality rather than majority, and we could still save $30,000 in that area. So I would not be in favor of this motion. First of all, we don't know the, we're up and down right now as to the primary being in March. That is not set in stone, so that could be a different timeframe. I think it puts a lot of things in upheaval, and I'm concerned. I know, I spoke to Alderman Odom today. My concern was that when I talked to some people up in Raleigh, they had said that the deadline for the House was March the 6th, and the Senate, February 28th, would introduce a local bill. But Alderman Odom said that he has spoken to Representative Speciale and said that he could, you know, get that in this week. But I believe, and Mr. Davis, could you help me with this one? We would have to have two local bills, one to change the election and one to change our terms of office. Would there be two? Because that would only be a three-year term.
It would all be in, it would all be in one bill.
So, all of that would have to be-
Different paragraphs in one bill, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I would vote no at this time on this measure.
Would we be able to amend this motion for 2022?
Do whatever you like.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Mayor, just a comment. I did speak with Representative Speciale. He is on the Elections Committee within the House. I believe after speaking with Ms. Ray today, she thought that it was the House deadline was sometime first week in April. So I don't believe that the timing would be an issue if we were able to pass this tonight. I would maybe recommend that the verbiage change in the document to reflect that our election would be held at the same time whenever the presidential primary would be held, in case that date does change. Whereas right now, we're calling it out as in March. The issue that I see with changing to 2022 is you would effectively be adding a year to our terms, which I would not be in favor of. But secondly, I believe we would need to look at the cost, because the reason this is subsidized so much is because it's a federal presidential election.
Midterms are federal elections, too, so you have the same number. It has to do with the polling places open.
And there was a concern, Alderman Bingle, that you expressed today about certain parties not being able to participate.
Correct.
So, I did verify today that if you're a member of the Green Party, the Libertarian Party, the Constitutionalist Party now, that even if you do not have a primary in 2020, in a presidential year, that you would still be able to vote. So you would get your ballot when you came to the polling place, and it would have the City of New Bern offices on there. So I just want to clarify those. Thank you.
So, if, so, Mr. Davis?
Yes, ma'am.
Attorney Davis. So if we go with the 2020 elections, okay, so that would actually delete one year from-
Yes, ma'am.
-our current terms that we have in place?
Yes, ma'am.
So then, we would have to actually start our election process in 2020 to come back into-
Yes, ma'am.
By '19, you'd have to probably file in December.
Yeah.
Right now, December of '19.
Right.
So this year is when the filing period, is that correct, Alderman Odom? I think it was February.
Yes, yes.
I mean, December, yeah. You know, the other option is, we can keep it in '21, which our terms were, and we just go to November. We will save. The idea is to keep it away. We are the only city that has an election in October. Therefore, we have to bear the full weight of opening up all the polling places in October. Keep it to our regular year and go to '21, and at least save with other communities such as Trent Woods, Cove City, Bridgeton, the other municipalities where River Bend that have their election there. Or I would be in favor of either that or November of '22. I don't believe in the, I think we should have one election. Very concerned- November of '22? Yeah. Either '21 or '22. I'm not a glutton for punishment, but, you know, I know five years would be long. But we could, we could definitely save some money by changing our election to November of '21 rather than October. And that's originally what I had proposed.
And if you go to November, there's no runoff, it's-
Correct. It would be plurality. That's how the other places do it. That's how the other places do it.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt a resolution to introduce and secure passage of local legislation, amending Article Three Elections of the City Charter with the change in verbiage from March primary to reflect whatever the attorney deems necessary, so it aligns with the primary presidential election.
Second. Okay, you have a motion and a second is there discussion? Uh, seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Sir, let me get a good understanding of this. So I want to make sure that I'm completely understanding this. We'll be losing a year, but actually, if we, if we go with, as you recommend, going with 2022, we'll be gaining a year, so we'll be?
Or we could stay in 21 and go to November. That's your other choice.
But this motion is for 2020?
For twenty.
Period?
Uh, no.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
No.
Alderwoman Harris?
No.
Alderman Bingle?
No.
The motion fails.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir, if you, if, if, how, in order to speak, the, the Board would have to give you, uh, make a motion to allow a speaker on this particular item of this Board, so?
Ms. Mayor signed up over there for it.
Beg pardon?
I signed up on this form to fill that all out earlier today.
Normally on an item, uh, if we amend the agenda to allow any public comment about something, the Board would need to approve. Anybody being able to speak? Does the Board at this time want to allow anybody to make any comments about this item?
No, it just died.
Beg pardon?
It just died.
We, we have, um, at the first meeting of the month, you can come up and speak on any item for four minutes during the normal agenda items. If, and there are from time to time, times when the Board does allow public comment. So, right now, there's no public comment on this item unless the Board approves comment.
Well, I was unfor-
And the Board has not made a motion or a second.
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, I-
Pretty comment.
I apologize, because I was under the impression that I would be able to speak here this evening.
Who gave you that understanding, sir?
Well, maybe I just misunderstood on my own, but I got a request for Alderman.
Yes, sir, okay, so let me, uh, it's any turn if you would, um, reiterate or, or give your own style of what I've just said about the policy.
Mr. Mayor, um-
Oh, okay.
I'd like to make a motion to allow the gentleman to speak.
Okay, this time we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, is there any discussion of the motion? Seeing no discussion of the motion, uh, all favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All votes, same. Okay, you, you can make a mo, you can make a comment now, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that very much. I'm Hal James, and I'm Chairman of Coastal Carolina Taxpayers Association. And I'm real pleased to tell you that we're well represented here tonight. Everybody on this first row over here and everybody in these first two rows over here are actually members of CCA. I'm personally not a resident of, uh, New Bern, but, uh, the very Reverend, uh, Ethel Sampson there is a very prominent citizen. She is a member of Coastal Carolina Taxpayers Association, I'm pleased to say that. Another prominent citizen to ask me to mention is Carl Mishka. He wanted me to mention that he's in favor of it. And we are here to speak in favor of this motion. I'd like to introduce, I'm also on the staff of the County Compass Newspaper, and our owner and editor is on this end of the building here, I mean, on the pew there. And then, uh, Rick Hopkins is our Vice Chairman, and he is the host of our radio show, uh, CCA Wake Up Call. I wanted to say, speak in favor of this. There are two items, or two issues about this that CCA is very interested in. As our taxpayer's name might imply, the big tax expense is. I talked to, uh, Director Melanie Ray quite extensively about this issue, and she said there are two ways that basically the money could be saved. One of them is if you had your elections at the same time that other municipalities do, that would save some money. Or a second would be, would be, as this, uh, petition here suggests, to do it every fourth year. There's a, there's a, the savings in either way. And since this one saves taxpayers a lot of money, that's the reason that we are supporting it since it was before you. Another thing that's interesting to us is the possibility of increasing voter turnout. That's very significant to us, because we believe that informed voters can, can help our country go in the direction it should go. We, the people, it's the government of the people. The more people we can get out at elections, the better we are. And these municipal elections have very poor turnout traditionally. A presidential election would boost the turnout extensively, and that'd give you another opportunity to get the voters out. So those are the two considerations that we have. We're really interested in increasing the voter turnout and saving that taxpayer money, and believe that adopting this resolution would do that, so that's what I was here to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, and I don't know, we, we're specific on, on the speaker. If anybody else wants to make comment, you're welcome to come up under this agenda item. Okay, seeing none, is there any, uh, any more discussion or anything concerning this item from the Board? Seeing none, let's go to item number fourteen.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Board. Item number fourteen is consideration of the Board to adopt a resolution approving the FY nineteen Equipment Financing. Uh, the budget for FY eighteen nineteen was approved by the Board on June twelfth, 2018. The budget included various capital vehicle and equipment purchases. A declaration of intent to reimburse was subsequently adopted by the Board, as well as an ordinance establishing the ERP Project Fund for the initial financing of Phase One of that project. Requests for financing proposals were sent to seventeen different banks. After reviewing the responses received, it is recommended that Bank of America Merrill Lynch be selected for the loan. The amount will not exceed two million, five hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars, which includes the refinancing of an existing loan for Phase One of the ERP project. The repayment period will be fifty-nine months at an interest rate of two point six zero nine six percent, and the loan will close the week of April one, 2019. There's a memo secluded from Mr. Sabatelli in your packet, happy to answer the questions.
Does the Board have questions?
And I'm also happy to say that that's a really good interest rate, and I think the city should be proud of our financial situation to be able to get those kind of interest rates.
Can I make a motion?
Anybody have any questions? I'd like to make a motion to, uh, consider adopting a resolution approving the FY nineteen Equipment Financing.
Second.
Motion and second is there further discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, okay, are we now at appointments? Let's do appointments, beg pardon?
Yes, we are.
Okay, let's have appointments starting with Alderman Bingle.
I have none this evening. I'm still, um, again, putting a shout out to anybody for the appearance commission, so I have no appointments this evening.
Okay, Alderman Harris?
Um, not tonight, ma'am.
Okay, Alderman Best?
Not tonight.
Alderman Kinsey?
Not tonight, sir.
And Alderman Best?
No.
Alderman, oh, no, sir. Attorneys report?
One item, Mayor, Members of the Board. Um, you have before you a resolution to authorize the, the mayor to execute a deed for Habitat. This is the same deed from your last meeting. Um, today, the closing attorney reached out to me to alert me to the fact that there was a discrepancy in the description that they used. Um, I'll spare the details, but this is the correct version. Um, and we simply need the Board to adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor to sign that same deed with the corrected description.
I'd like to make a motion to, what's the city attorney just said?
Second.
Okay, do you need a roll call now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's, uh, any, any proof of discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, uh, Mr. Davis, did you have anything else? Okay, city managers report?
I have nothing, sir.
Okay, under new business, I would like to start off, uh, welcoming Reverend Ethel Sampson and, uh, County Commissioner Johnny Sampson. And always good to have you here with us. Thank you for what you do in our community. Uh, at this time, let's start new business with, uh, Alderman Odom.
Uh, yes, sir, just one, um, one thing. If Matt would come, give us an update on the Trent Road expansion and the closing, temporary closure that will ensue and the timeframe for that.
And include the part that's not ever been paved?
Yeah, that's-
End of discussion, please.
Yeah, that's the next discussion.
All right, just a, uh, quick update to what Alderman Odom is referring to. This is a project that was started as part of the Columbia Development Project, uh, otherwise known as the Harris Teeter Project. And if you recall, last spring, they widened Trent Road to three lanes from Glen Burnie Road to the Harris Teeter back parking lot, if you will. Um, the remaining portion of that project will be to widen Trent Road to three lanes from the back of Moore's Barbecue or the Harris Teeter parking lot to Morton Road, which is the entrance to the Cypress Shore subdivision. Um, the big key to this project is actually the crossing of Wilson Creek. Uh, to do this, they will need to widen that crossing and expand the Box Covet that runs underneath Trent Road. Uh, but the plans are done, the contractor is in place, and the plan is to actually expedite this project, uh, beginning on April first, which is next Monday. Uh, as a part of this, this will require closing Trent Road at Wilson Creek for a period of two weeks. Uh, we've worked with the, uh, New Bern Police Department and Department of Transportation. We have message boards in place that will be activated tomorrow to start letting motorists know that that section of the road will be closed beginning April first, and it will reopen, uh, no later than Sunday, April thirteenth, uh, in preparation for Monday morning traffic. So that's the current update on that crossing. Once that, once that is done, that, that responsibility of the developer, it will be complete. Um, and I think the other question that the mayor asked is a section of Trent Road that was never paved. I think just as a, uh, update or refresher, we did come to an agreement that we would accept payment versus resurfacing that. I think it was an amount of forty-four thousand dollars, and that has been received. So as far as that goes, that should be considered complete. Uh, just, just as a reference, I think Colleen's added a map to the, uh, to the, to the screen for the viewers and for the Board to see, but that just kind of illustrates, uh, the red section will be the closure, and the dotted section will be for local traffic only. And that will be noted at the intersections of Trent Road and Glen Burnie Road.
He's going to totally replace the Box Covet?
Uh, no, the Box Covet there will stay in place. What they will do is they will extend the necessary distance to, uh, widen the road.
Okay.
Matt, can we get this in a, uh, email or something so that we could share it with some of our constituents or whatever?
Sure. Uh, we'll get Colleen to forward that to you, because she's added the dates to the map.
Let me just go on our channel three and all that.
Website, social media, uh, Cal City Three TV.
The, the plan is just, uh, as soon as we're done tonight, to get everything pushed out on social media and, uh, C Three TV and to let everybody know as much as possible.
Okay, um, anything else, sir?
No, sir, that's all I can hear.
Ma'am, if you please, thank you. I just want to, um, I've had some calls from some of my constituents wanting to know if the Oaks Road project was complete.
Uh, it is near complete. There are a couple locations where we've got some issues with the asphalt that a contractor's going to have to go back and, uh, modify or adjust. And we also have got some striping we're trying to finish, uh, crosswalks for schools and school signs, and some parallel parking on, uh, National and George as well. So we're, we're getting pretty close, but not quite there yet.
Um, also, um, Matt and, uh, Mr. Stevens, um, I've had calls from some of my constituents as well that they are now receiving money, and they're at the process of trying to clean out their homes and get their houses back into where it's livable, and they have debris and the items is, will the city be able to pick these items up now? I know the time period has passed and, um, but again, a lot of people are just receiving money and, uh, in the process now of trying to rebuild their homes.
Um, we have been trying to work with individuals, I think, uh, with regards to muck out. That's one thing, if we can see potentially that it's muck out, and that, keep in mind, we're not going to get reimbursed for it at this point, because we have a cutoff period that, that we met. I think Matt and his staff have been trying to work with that, but when we start seeing construction debris coming out, that's, it stops. Because they're on their, they, they're responsible for having their own construction dumpster to handle that work. Uh, but if it's muck out work that was as a result of flooding or damage or water intrusion due to wind-driven rain, then we could potentially work with them. But if it's, uh, if it's, uh, if it's construction debris material for installation of new stuff or removal of things to make new stuff fit, then, then we don't, we don't cover that portion of it.
The only thing I would add to that is, you know, as Mark said, we have been working with some of the volunteer groups still here in town, and some of the folks that are still doing that muck and gut. Uh, if you do have somebody that's in the process of doing that, I thought, I would, would ask that they do contact our office. That way, we can coordinate that. I mean, if they're just sticking on the road, we probably would flag them and not pick them up. But if they do coordinate, that will work with them best we can.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Just real quick. Sorry, just real quick, while we're on the highway improvements, uh, portion, I do want to make note, and I should have mentioned it in my comments, but, uh, uh, NCDOT's contractor who is doing the resurfacing on the Highway Seventy project, uh, they are anticipating to do the work on the, uh, Seventy West On Ramp from MLK Boulevard and the Seventy West Off Ramp, uh, to Glen Burnie Road this weekend, March thirtieth through the thirty-first. These two ramps will be closed during that time, there will be signed detours in place, so I do want to make the, the public aware of that. Uh, obviously, the Pembroke exit was kind of an issue there that one day, whenever they were doing those improvements with a lot of traffic trying to come through downtown, uh, which turned out to be a bad idea for them, rather than following the detour signs. But, uh, uh, these two particular ramps will be closed for those improvements that DOT are working on this weekend, so I just want to make, make sure that the public is aware of that.
I know you need certain temperature for that, but it sure would be nice when the weather gets a little warmer, if you could get them to do it at night like you did doing Raleigh. Uh, I know we, like, like that. Anything else? Mr. Kinsey, you got anything?
Yes, I'd like to thank the Board and Foster for allowing, uh, Church of Christ to come in with all the new furniture to, uh, give to the people that lost a lot of, pretty much everything. And, uh, it was a sign-up sheet that, they had a sheet that, there was following guidelines that you had to fill out. A lot of folks thought you just couldn't go up and pick up furniture, but it, they had an order there. And, uh, they're still picking up. Uh, today, I think it was maybe about five or six families that has not picked up anything, so it's a possibility that it might be some leftover that they probably can share with someone. And I'd just like to thank the Board again for that, for that, they, the conscious decision that they made to, uh, help the people in the city of New Bern. And thank you Foster for the, the, uh, employees that helped out to unload those big trucks. Thank you so very much. And Matt also.
Anything else?
That's it, sir.
Alderman Astor?
Hey, Matt, need for you to give us an update on the Airport Road, uh, project and, old Airport Road project? And when can we start seeing some meetings to discuss it with the public?
Old Airport Road, um, the construction plans are complete. Uh, the engineer is actually working on the construction documents and bid documents, so we can get that out to the public. You and I had a brief conversation earlier today that, to try to start setting up some, some, whether it's community meetings or one-on-one meetings with the residents that live down Oaks Road, uh, here in the next couple weeks.
Airport Road.
Airport Road. Uh, but the, the goal is to, uh, probably in the next thirty to sixty days, have that thing out to bid, so hopefully by, uh, this summer, we, we, we start seeing some, some action out there.
Great, okay. It's, so you, you are planning on still having meetings for the residents and all the?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Alderman Kinsey, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Alderman Kinsey, do you have something left?
Matt, can you give us an update on the ditches?
Um, I get, well, crews are still working. We have, uh, reallocated several of our public works employees to, to the ditch maintenance crew.[1742.88] crew. They're working daily on all of the ditches. We have also been working with the FEMA folks to identify, I think we've walked 20 miles of ditches with the FEMA folks, and we're applying for some, some money with FEMA for that work as well, so that's in the process. I think the other thing you've asked me about is the employees that we're working to get for that as well. We did get some confirmation emails today that everything is in place as far as the city's concerned for getting those employees. They're in the process of vetting those employees and getting the screening done to actually get them in place. The email I got today said just as soon as they get them, we'll come down here and they'll have to do a little bit of training with our staff and our supervisors, but just as soon as they have employees ready to go, we'll have them.
Just, just to kind of add detail to that, the employees that he's talking about is through the Green Lamp Program, which is the Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Program that they have over off Glen Burnie. This is a program that was allocated money from the state to operate a program to where they can take individuals who were displaced from hurricanes or lost their job due to the result of a hurricane and put them into a workforce situation with potential municipalities or businesses. We have applied to receive some of those folks. They actually came to visit with us to ask if we would be interested, and it is fully funded by that program. The only thing we have to provide for them is supervision, which is a fantastic opportunity for us, and I think we have asked for up to eight.
We've asked for eight for Parks and Recreation, six for ditch maintenance, and one for accounting, actually. So, 15.
So, we're looking at about 15 employees potentially that may come onto the program to help us out, which will be fully funded through that program and no cost to the city. So, an excellent opportunity for us. I hope we get them all.
Okay. Alderman.
Yes, and continuing, just wanted to remind everyone that this weekend, this Saturday, from 10 to 2, at the Headquarters Fire Station on Broad Street will be open house. If you really want to see some of the city's nice fire equipment and just beating some of our firefighters, it'd be a good opportunity. Is it, are all the fire stations are just, just headquarters? Okay. Again, that's this Saturday from 10 to 2. And Charlie, thank you very much for the streetlights. It really lights that intersection up, and hopefully it will make a big difference over there. My friend Seymour won't have his house hit again, so, thank you.
Glad you get that, though.
Yeah, so does Seymour.
Alderman Harris.
Yes, I have a couple things. First, Mayor, when I was in DC, I had the pleasure of bumping into someone that runs a grant program for AARP where they, where you write a grant as whether a nonprofit or a municipality in regards to transportation, housing, public spaces, and safe transportation. And I've been saying during the election time that I am big in chess, and I think it would be great to have a chess park. And I've been working with staff and some community leaders in a couple of groups, looking at the Pollock Street Fountain area, that slab of property that we own where there's trees already, and I know Swiss Bear has looked at it. But I want to be able to get the blessing from the board to be able to submit this grant for the possibility of having a chess park there, which just means you get some stone benches, chess is engraved into it, and you're able to play chess with a couple of trees. I feel like it's going to impact the communities. Again, Trent Court, Creighton Terrace, it deals, AARP deals with elderly, so you're dealing with, you know, over in my ward where you have the 80-unit housing that's coming through, and, you know, you have the young children, the intergenerational, and we have a 90% chance of being approved for this grant because of the gentleman that I met and the story behind what we're doing. The only hiccup was a while back, there was a motion made in 2014 that no city funds or in-kind could deal with that plot of land, and I just want to make sure that moving forward, we can give Development Services the authorization to be able to submit the grant and work on any planning that has to do with that chess park idea.
Mayor Almore.
Yeah, I'll have to circle back with you. I'm not following along with that resolution from 2014.
I'll try to fill you in. I believe Swiss Bear or some groups came to us on multiple occasions about the fountain. They wanted the fountain installed on that particular parcel.
Okay.
There was a lot of concern about the install cost as well as the maintenance going forward. We all know how expensive fountains were. I think on maybe their third visit here, they basically said they wanted us to adopt the concept, which would allow them to move forward and start seeking grant opportunities.
Ring a bell now, yes.
Which we did, and I believe the motion, don't quote me, but it was that we would support the plan essentially, go get funding if you can, but that there would be no city funds expended toward those efforts.
That rings a bell, yes.
So, I think what Alderman Harris is saying is, staff is concerned that the time, energy they would put toward that would be going against the previous motion, so they're looking for some clarification, some leeway to go seek those funds.
What's the sunset on that motion because it never came to fruition?
Well, yeah, they're, except for the board, as long as we're satisfied that that other group has abandoned the project, and that, I don't know if that's worth the phone call or if we know right now that that's been abandoned.
I'm on the Swiss Bear Board, and I don't see that, I haven't seen that in the program we've worked for the past at least two years, so it may have fallen off. I think Kathy Adolf, I think, had led that group, so it may be.
And she's leading this group as well.
Yeah.
So.
If you want to put this new issue on the agenda for next time, then in the intervening period, we can verify?
There's actually a deadline to submit.
Well, it's not so much a deadline, it's just I would hate to find out that they are 10 miles down the road solving the problem and we weren't aware of it.
Well, it's just to apply for the grant, because regardless if we use this plot, we have other city land that we can utilize the idea, the idea of a chess park.
Gotcha.
Just because there's a deadline on?
Gotcha.
This process is due April 17th. Our first meeting is the 9th.
Gotcha. So, you don't, you don't need a parcel right now, you just need, you just need support to seek the grants.
We just want to know that it's okay that we can submit the grant.
Gotcha.
That the time of typing.
Wouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And then my second thing is Kidsville. Every time I drive by, I see the red line is only at 150,000. Have we been getting any more money in to update the red line?
Real quick, while he's on his way up, did y'all want to do a motion or change that? Because?
If you want the grant to?
I'd like to make a motion to allow Development Services to submit the AARP grant for the potential of having a chess park.
Second.
Who was the second, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there further discussion on that motion? Seymour, let's have a real talk starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle. Nice question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Attorney, you know, I don't like to vote, I don't like to do especially resolution-type votes during new business because it hasn't been posted on gen. I support the issue, I'm for it, I want to do it, but what is the legality of the fact that it hasn't been put out there or we haven't, you know, I like to give direction and say, do it, but as far as a resolution?
This is a motion to seek a grant on, on a non-specified piece of property.
Right.
And no, and no money's being spent.
Right, no money, just time.
Then, yes, I just want to make sure, because we said somebody made a motion, made a resolution, they used the word resolution, so that's why I.
Yeah, that's involving a specific piece that we're, we're not talking about at the moment.
Right.
So, all we're doing is make a motion to apply for a grant?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Alderman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Almore?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Dast?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Okay, the second part of it.
The second part of that is, we have received $10,000 in funds. We have also received commitments from several businesses in the area to donate more money, and so you should be seeing that thing rise up. We're planning on increasing that in $25,000 increments, so you should see that moving soon.
Yay.
Good job.
Do you want to update them real quickly on Saturday, this past Saturday? Yes, we had a Kidsville Design Day. Kidsville 2.0 Design Day was this past Saturday. We had about 50 kids participate. Our designer from Leathers and Associates came into the West New Bern Recreation Center. He met with small groups of kids, anywhere from two to 20 in the groups, got a lot of great input from the kids on what they wanted to see in the next Kidsville, then gave them the opportunity to make drawings of the proposed playground. Later that evening at 6 o'clock, the designer unveiled what the proposed Kidsville was going to look like, and, and he did a great job, and he went through every single amenity in that playground. What I'm waiting on now is for them to turn that, that plan into a 3D rendering, and we will present that to the board as soon as we get that.
Yay.
So, it's very exciting.
Very exciting.
Anything else?
Um, that's all I have.
Okay, Alderman Bingle?
Okay, I have several things. Nothing that I need staff for, except, Mark, do we want to talk about Don Zimmer coming? Were you going to mention that in yours?
I can talk about it real quickly. I think the?
Don Zimmer is the mayor of what?
Hoboken.
Hoboken, Hoboken, New Jersey. That's the mayor of Hoboken, New Jersey. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Just real quickly, and, and some of the details are still being hashed out, but if, if the board will please keep your agendas open up for the evening of April the 3rd and a good bit of the day on April the 4th, the city clerk will be reaching out to you regarding your availability at two different meeting times on the 4th, and a potential special call meeting if the board so chooses to have some discussion with the, the mayor of Hoboken. And that, in addition to on April the 3rd, that evening, she plans on doing a presentation that will be opened up to a lot of different elected officials at the, at Oranger Hall, at Creighton Community College, as well as potentially the public, depending on the availability of space. But I'm sure that there will be space available, so we hope some of the people, the public will attend. I know Ms. Cho was here earlier, but I don't see her out in the crowd now, but there's a group called the Care Group that is, has, has made way for her to come in town to present some of the things that she experienced as the mayor of Hoboken during the Superstorm Sandy event, and some of the lessons learned, and is now, I guess Hoboken, New Jersey is also known kind of as one of the resiliency models with regards to flooding and flood resiliency for the future and some of the things that they did. So, she will be doing a, a presentation on the night of April the 3rd. That is tentatively right now set, I believe, at 6:30. We will get out more details and send that out through our social media, and then ultimately the, the board will have opportunity in small groups, if they wish to do so, on April the 4th, to have some, some very detailed discussions and times and questions with regards to some of her presentation the night before, with regards to where we can go in the future, as well as if the board so chooses that they want to have a special call meeting to, to discuss in a quorum-type situation, moving forward and strategies and things like that to get some further detail from that, from Mayor Zimmer. So, hopefully I covered that to your liking, Alderman Bingle, but I know there's some detail that's still left to be had. I do know that they're planning on touring her around, showing her some of our worst, worst-hit areas that will help in some of her formulation of discussion topics with the short, I'm sorry, with the small groups before, before she meets with them. So, that's kind of the, the agenda tentatively right now.
Okay, the next thing I just want to mention is, I was asked to announce the Carnival of Colors, which is New Bern, previously, New Bern gets your pink on, New Bern gets your color on, that really supports and celebrates people with cancer. So, it is this Saturday, March 30th, 11:30 at the North Carolina History Center, and I'd like to invite all the public, everybody, to come out and enjoy that at the North Carolina History Center. So, sad news and happy news. So, let me get through the sad news first, and I just want to express my extremely deepest condolences to the Pontiff family. For those of you that know, but Joey Pontiff, who has always been known as the Sign Man. All of us have worked with him for many years, passed away yesterday morning, and I'm very sad. He was a friend of mine for many years. I actually got involved with him when he opened up his first little sign shop on Broad Street. He rented some space from Steve and I, and I was very sorry and sad to hear that news, so I want to extend my condolences to the Pontiff family. Now, for the happy news, in that I just want to say that last Tuesday night, God saw fit to bless Steve and I with our third grandchild. Ms. Everly Grace was born at 4:56, weighing seven pounds, one ounces, and 19 inches long, and it was a rough start to her new little life and to my daughter, but thankfully, all is well. That's why her middle name is Grace, because by the grace of God, she's here and the baby's okay. So, I just want to thank everybody. I had a lot of really wonderful comments and just a happy moment for our family. So, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations.
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 Mayor, I have another thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Montane, or maybe Mr. Stevens, I know it was sometimes last year, I, I don't particularly have the date, that we discussed out on the 43 and 55 junction there of possibly getting the DOT and installing the flashing yellow lights. And the reason why I'm asking now is the actual, the 43 and 70 connector that will be going over to, I think it's Martin Luther King?
17.
17, okay. Is, how far along is that project? Is that something that's going to be implemented, is going to be implemented this year, or do you know, or is it, not anything I have to worry about, more traffic coming out in that area? Because when that traffic, when that connector is finished through, it's going to be a lot more traffic out there on 43, 70, and 55 connector.
Jordan, Jordan's telling me 2023 in the background as far as that connector.
Towards the connector going across?
Correct. But as far as the flashing lights out there, we did contact DOT, they were going to do a study and look into that. I have not heard anything back from them, but I will certainly reach out to them, see if we can get an update on if they've made a decision or if they've, you know, come to any conclusion.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
One more thing, Matt, don't go away. Can you get another, I know we constantly talk about waste industries and climb around, but if you'll take a ride to the Hancock Street parking lot, they picked up trash yesterday and left half of it going.
Is that the one that Buddy texted me a picture of?
No, that was behind Beer Army. They did that. But on Hancock, the Hancock Street lot, there's two or three bags. I mean, it just, they lift it, it falls out the back, and they just, they don't even notice it. They just left it laying in there. And I know that we continue to have issues with waste industry, may be time for another meeting, but they really just don't seem to pay, pick up, when they pick up the trash, they're not paying attention to it. I know Alderman Odom stands firm with me on this one.
I had a question, maybe staff, I think I've asked this before, could we review the legal repercussions and, and some sort of callbacks that we might have in that? I personally don't want to be a part of another meeting. I think I've had probably seven or eight in my tenure on this board with them, and it's the same excuse, they've had a turnover, they've had different personnel here, they've got equipment issues, and they're going to fix it, and it's just the same old answers. And they, it's kind of like the sudden link meeting we had today, they have a monopoly, and there's nobody else here to do it, so either we have to take some recourse legally and monetarily, or either we need to go recruit somebody to start a new trash pickup company in New Bern. But their service is ridiculous, to say the least.
Go ahead.
I got it. I reckon my question maybe for the city attorney, we've got an issue with some residents in one of my neighborhoods about the noise from the trash truck at 4 o'clock and 4:30 in the morning, where he's picking up dumpsters and beating and banging. Well, I know Matt and I have both contacted them and said, hey, you've got to quit going over there at that time of the morning. They said, well, we're not going over there. It's not us. So, the homeowners, some of the homeowners went out at 4 o'clock in the morning, and on, on Thursday morning, and sat over there and waited for them, and they're right. They were not at that particular store, but they were at the one across the street, beating and framing dumpsters back and forth and stuff, which is happens to be outside the city limits, so the noise ordinance really wouldn't take an effect there. But, you know, instead of, I, I feel like they kind of cheated me a little bit by saying, no, we weren't at Dunkin' Donuts, but they were across the street at the other store doing it, you know? They didn't admit, they didn't come up and admit to that. So, anything that can be done since the business that they are beating and framing on is outside the city limits?
No, so there's not, other than just friendly conversation to see.
And, and just to follow up on that, I did, I talked to them on either, probably yesterday, I talked to them yesterday, and they did go back and review that in their Monday morning meeting, and they said they had notified every one of their routes, so they're not to be out there that early, and they are not to be in that area that early. So, hopefully we'll see some difference. I'm sure if we don't, you'll get a phone call.
Oh, you'll hear about it.
And I'll get a phone call.
I got a phone call at 5:00 in the morning saying, can you hear this?
Look, he gets a phone call at 5:00, and I get a text shortly thereafter, so just, but, so hopefully, hopefully this will satisfy them now.
Okay, thank you.
We need a new business at this time.
Sorry.
Do we need a process?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Bill's come for New Bern all at this time.
Motion adjourned.
Motion second. All favor the motion, say aye. All votes, say aye. Meeting is adjourned.